All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to this July 17, 2023, meeting of the Homewood City Council. Before we get started tonight, we have David Silverstein here, and he's going to speak to us about county commission. Come on up. We're happy to have you here.
Well, it's always a pleasure to be before you. Nice to see you. I am not here to talk about a new project, believe it or not. I will be one in the not-too-distant future, but I'm here to tell you all that I have put my name in the hat for the vacant county commission seat that Steve Ammons once held before he went to run the Birmingham Business Alliance. It's for District Five, which is parts of Homewood, parts of Hoover, Vestavia, and Mountain Brook. And this seat that Steve vacated chairs economic development. And so I was approached a little over a month ago to look at running for this seat. You know, the past 30 years, I'm David Silverstein to those that I do have not met. I was told to keep this short, okay? For the past 30 years, I've been involved with economic development in this region, in this community. Born and raised in Mountain Brook, married my high school sweetheart who's from Mountain Brook, raised my five kids in Mountain Brook. I now have, just had my 10th grandson, now have 13 total grandchildren, 10 of which are being raised in this district. So I believe in this special district. Because of my economic development background, having been involved with developing the summit and the deposits downtown, your Publix on Green Springs, Whole Foods on 280, I've had the experience in this world, economic development world, to, I think, bring some expertise to the county commission. People ask me, why are you doing this? I truly just want to serve. That's why you sit there, because you want to serve your community. I'd love to be part of the process that continues to work on making this county, this city, this region, a great place to live, work, and raise a family. It's really not any more complicated than that. I have supported Republicans and Democrats during my career. Early in my life, my father, when I was a little bitty boy, taught me to play golf. And one of the first things he taught me was, keep the ball down the middle of the fairway. And I sort of believe that that's good government, keeping the ball down the middle of the fairway. And that's what I promised to bring to the county commission, a level of expertise to assist in economic development, experience, be fair and balanced, understand the issues that are being presented, and work on behalf of this county and the 35 municipalities that make up the county. You know, I saw a CNBC report the other day, and it ranked the top states in the country to do business, top states in the country to do business. North Carolina was number one. Their research park, Research Triangle, has just been fabulous. They've invested heavily in education. Alabama was 42nd, 42nd. So, I'm not going to do this by myself, but I want to move the needle in the right direction. And hopefully, by serving in this capacity, we can go out and recruit new employers to come. One vision I have is, with UAB and Southern Research being here, we should seek to develop what I call a life sciences campus, where you can recruit a company like Merck or Pfizer to come and develop a drug here, leveraging off Southern Research and UAB, and create what's called bench-to-bedside. You develop a drug, UAB can then administer that drug right there to patients in the hospital. Pittsburgh has a great life sciences campus. Between those two world-class entities, UAB and Southern Research, why not think a little boldly about how we can establish something like that in our community? People used to say to me, who in the world's going to shop outside when I develop the summit? And they shouldn't be saying to me, we can't do this life sciences campus, because I know we can. It's collaboration. It's bringing the right people around the table to work on it, discuss it, figure out how we go about doing it. We have a challenge. We've got to bring new employers into our county, into our cities, and increase revenue, support education, support police and firefighters and their first responders, all the things that we all want to see happen. So, I stand here before you, and I'd love your vote. Tomorrow, it's a special election. It's been a short campaign. I think the last time I campaigned, I was in the fifth grade, and I handed out Jolly Ranchers. I hadn't handed out any Jolly Ranchers. But, so, thank you. You are my last campaign stop, my last campaign stop. And I will conclude with this. I have enjoyed every minute of it these past four weeks. I've enjoyed every minute of it, because I've met people that perhaps I would not have touched had I not campaigned, and I have learned the following, that the overwhelming majority of our residents that live here, and I think it's true across the country, the overwhelming majority of our citizens would like to see less polarization and more collaboration, because that's how I believe you get things done. And we've got a lot to do, and I think the best way to do it is through collaboration. So, thank you so much. Good to see you all.
Thank you. We appreciate you stopping by.
I'll answer a question. You might got a question? Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. I think that is everything that we've got before we get started here tonight, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Mr. Jones, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide the council tonight as we meet and discuss matters that are important to our city. Pray that we choose to do that which is moral and rational. I pray that our motivations are for the good of the citizens. I pray that we'll be able to solve our city's challenges and make policies that address those challenges. Help us to be competent and excellence in all that we do. I pray for the peace and prosperity of Homewood, and thank you for our continued blessings bestowed upon this city. It is in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Everyone, I'll face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, Ms. Burgett, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Here.
Ms. Gier?
Here.
Mr. Alamon?
Here.
Mr. Wolverton? Mr. Sims?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Nels?
Here.
Mrs. Andrus?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
And Mr. White?
Here.
All right, so we've got nine of us tonight. Next, we'll go to the reading of the minutes. We've got a couple of different sets that have both been distributed previously. First is from our council meeting of June 26, 2023, an entertaining motion, and a second to dispense with the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved nine to zero. It entertains a similar motion for the minutes from our specially-called council meeting of July 10, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are also approved nine to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. The first one is an at-large position on the Arts Council. We have one applicant for that, George Culver. So I assume that you'd like to make a nomination?
I would. The Arts Council and myself would like to make a nomination for George Culver to fill the at-large position.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Gier, a second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And congratulations to Mr. Culver. That's approved nine to zero. Next, we have a Ward Three Historic Preservation position. We have three applicants for this position. Ward Three, do you know what you want to do about interviews yet, or do we need to wait for Mr. Sims to get back?
Yeah, I was waiting on when Mr. Sims would be available, probably next week, but it might be a little bit.
Okay.
I will say that they would like to go ahead and get somebody in, because we have a forum coming up on August 16, and they would like to have the new member in place by that time. I don't know, does that, would that work?
I think so. I think we can work it out next week.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll check.
All right, sounds good. And then we need to open a Ward Four Historic Preservation Committee?
Yes, Allison Litten is having to resign as of July 31 due to some health issues with her family, so I do want to thank Allison for her service. She's been a fantastic member of the commission, and we are going to miss her. But yeah, we do need to open that Ward Four spot, and I want to leave it open. Since she's not technically finishing until July 31, I feel like we could go ahead and leave it open to that.
August 28?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll do August 28 at 4:30. All right.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just wanted to, Planning Commission seat.
Fantastic.
Sorry, I don't, I don't think you and I spoke before the meeting.
You told me, but I forgot.
Not a problem. So I just wanted to make the announcement. First of all, I want to thank John Cronteris for the long-held seat he's had on the Planning Commission, and we'll certainly do a proclamation in his honor for everything that he's done for the city of Homewood in the coming weeks. He and I are actually meeting later on this week. But to fill his position, I'm going to appoint Gusty Goulas to come onto the Planning Commission for us. I think his knowledge of residential real estate and everything else is going to be a very big benefit to that commission, so just wanted you guys to be aware.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, so there are no additions to the agenda tonight, so it entertains a motion and a second for approval of our agenda.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Alamon, and there was a second from Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved nine to zero. Next, we have the consent agenda. It entertains a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtney, second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero. All right, that brings us to our old business agenda. The first item is 10-0523, bid opening held for, held on July 10, 2023 at 4:31 PM for the Salter Road Pocket Park Project, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met July the 10, and regarding this item, reviewing the bids, voted four to zero to recommend accepting the bid from CBNA as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine to zero, and will be Resolution 2389. Next item, 14-0623, request to declare various municipal items surplus, brought to us by a couple of different department heads, and we will start with another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted four to zero to recommend this item. However, I will add, today, we had one addition, and it was my decision, so you can blame me, but I felt like we needed to take care of this. So it was distributed to the committee today that we were adding a 2015 Tahoe. Mr. Kendrick has this information as well, and so that would be added, and then we're removing the 2004 Ford Expedition. I have that information here. So still, I would, I guess I would just make a recommendation from the floor to approve the amended, the amended list for surplus.
All right. All right, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. The ordinance has established and declared that falling described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, and it sees Exhibit A and Exhibit B attached. Exhibit A is an inscription of various vehicles sponsored by the Police Department and four motorcycles that are declared to be. Second part of that is a number of vehicles set out by the street, excuse me, the Fleet Maintenance Department declaring surplus. Exhibit B is the vehicle that Mr. Jones referred to as a 2015 Tahoe with 125,000 miles that was, is a part of a traveler's insurance claim. Section two, that the mayor and clerk is authorized and directed to dispose of the property listed in Exhibit A by auction to the highest bidder. Section three, the mayor and clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the property listed in Exhibit B by conveyance to travelers as part of an insurance claim settlement.
All right, thank you very much. I would entertain, well, first reading, any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Burgett, Mr. Burgett?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Alamon?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Nels?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes. All right, so that's nine to zero, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Alamon?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Nels?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes. All right, so that is also nine to zero, and will be ordinance 2871. All right, next item, 15-0623, request to amend fiscal year 2223 budgets, brought to us by Chief Tim Ross, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted five to zero on this to recommend approval of the item.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and will be Resolution 2390. Next item, 19-0623, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for garbage services, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I had just a few, a few comments, just to bring to everyone's attention. This is an item we have really been struggling with. Mr. Squires has done everything humanly possible to, to make the current arrangement work, and as other people who have served with me, now that I'm going on 23 years, I have not really wanted to do, to do this. But we're at that point where there's really not an option. The, the numbers are impressive in terms of savings. We're going from, you know, a cost of 3.1 million down to around 1.57 is the, is the cost. So I just want to just be, I think, confident in saying that this has not been taken lightly. We have really studied it as a council. The mayor has done a lot of work, and then Berkeley has worked as well. So this is not something that just came about. I mean, we, it's really been a work in process, and, you know, a lot of us have toured the facility that this is going to be working towards. So I think it's going to, I think it's going to be a good decision moving forward. But I just wanted to add those comments as we're, as we're voting on it tonight.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
I was just going to add on to what Walter said. Berkeley did a really good job last Monday of kind of laying out the issues that we've been dealing with, and it's really been something that's, it's kind of been a slow burn since the pandemic in 2020, particularly with staffing. We haven't been able to find nor retain employees in our, in our garbage service. And, and at this point, as of right now, we're down 11 employees in that department, and by the end of this week, we'll be down 13. And we have a lot of our street employees having to work for running trash routes so that the trash can get picked up. But that's not what they were hired to do, and it's not necessarily what they want to be doing. So I feel like this change is going to give us a more dedicated service that's going to make sure that our citizens are getting the service that they deserve, and, and like Walter said, it is going to be a pretty significant cost savings as well, which is, which is an important thing.
Ms. Andrus, did you?
Yes, I just wanted to thank everyone for the work that they did. You know, I know Berkeley has, I know this has been going on for a long time. You know, Berkeley has shared his thoughts with us for quite a while, so I want to thank him for the work that he's put in. I want to thank the mayor for the statement that he put out Friday night. I took that statement, and I sent it out to the Ward Five newsletter today. I'm heard back, just countless, lots and lots and lots of people replied to thank us for the work, to say they understood the decision. But I do want to make sure that everybody in that department knows how much they've been appreciated, our sanitation workers, how important they've been to us, and, and how much we know how hard they work, and I want to appreciate, just say, we appreciate everything that they have done. And I know that the opportunity that they have to stay in the sanitation, in the Streets Department, so I'm appreciative of that, and just want to thank them for all their service all these years.
All right. Mr. Hart?
Just following up on that same thing. I think everybody that spoke to me about this were concerned about the employees. These have become friends of theirs, you know, the people who set your trash out, you see them every time. We give them water, we, you know, do nice things for them, because they've done a great job for us. And so I think there was more concern about not their trash getting picked up, but what happens to those employees that have become such friends, and, you know, that apparently some of them have stated they're concerned about what their future's going to look like. And so I think the fact that we're willing to keep on those folks who want to stay on with us, you know, and, and some of them finish out their retirement is really a great thing. And I think even in the Streets Department, they've always needed more help. So, so I think it's overall, that has been the concern that I've heard from more than anything else, is what happens to these folks, you know? So anyway, I'm glad to hear that Berkeley says he can keep them all on that want to stay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I just wondered, I couldn't remember the duration of the contract that we're signing. Eight years and two months, okay. And it is, I think it's important to note, it's regarding air and electric services.
Correct. Yep. All right, anybody else? All right, so we have a motion from Finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero, and will be Resolution 2391. Next item, 08-0623, request permission to work in the right-of-way at 2844 18th Street South, brought to us by Chris Jones of Wayans and Wyatt Hugh. And we're going to start with a report from Public Works. Does anyone know who's reporting at Public Works? Probably so. So, looks like, Ms. Nels, you want to report this out?
Thank you, thank you. So we met on the 10th of July, which I can't believe it's been that long, and the committee voted four to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by myself, Counselor Nels, and seconded by Counselor Gier.
All right, thank you very much. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Whoa, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden?
Cale, I think he did agree to put it in the, in the street where we wanted it to go.
He did.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and will be Resolution 2392. All right, next item, 10-0623, request for permission to vacate a permanent easement at Second Presbyterian Church, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus?
Yes, the committee met last week in my absence, and I want to thank Counselor Gualtney for chairing that committee while I was gone. They voted three to zero to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Nels and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, actually, the way that we discussed it, the committee is to do a plan of property and supply of us a new, actually, quickly, move that to the church, which is a vacation.
Okay.
Church is more timely, for the church.
All right.
But probably, at some point, we could read the ordinance and prepare for surplus.
I think we're ready.
This is an ordinance to declare more property as, some of those properties, the owner and owner of the city, the revenue, the incentive, or be declared as private. See, by the status and the plan, it's more likely, the owner and owner of the city, the staff, or the staff of, of property with a point four, three, two, more or less, is no longer used to come as a municipal property. And therefore, to declare some of those properties, except for, the mayor's authorized and direct to make a complete change of deed. The later property is second Presbyterian, so it's totally in consideration, but that that the property was originally conveyed by a certain company that was simply out of consideration, persistent construction, so changed, presumably, to let them walk into their property, deposit, and simply determine that the property will, and may be for private. That's the ordinance, so we keep, optimize the, the property.
All right. Anyone have any questions or comments on that? If not, then I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Alamon?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Nels?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes. All right, so that's nine to zero, and now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Alamon, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Alamon?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Nels?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes. All right, so that's also nine to zero, and will be ordinance 2872. And Mr. Kendrick, do we need to take additional action?
No, sir.
We're good.
No, we don't need to make a statement.
Great, thank you. All right, so that brings us to our committee referral agenda. It entertains a motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved nine to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, 07-0723, request to set a public hearing to consider declaring the property located at 55 Bagby Drive a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, brought to us by Scott Cook. We will set that public hearing for July 31 at 6:00 PM. Next item, 08-0723, request to set a public hearing, consider, to consider declaring the property located at 65 Bagby Drive a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinances 1910 and 1750 excessive growth, also brought to us by Scott Cook. We will also set that item for July 31 at 6:00 PM. Next item, 09-0723, request to set a public hearing for consideration for approval of a final development plan for 815 Greens Springs Highway. Current zoning, it is, the zoning is within the GERD. The zoning is within the GERD. The applicant is Brian Hatcher, Greensprings Development LLC, for the purpose of redeveloping a four-acre site for a new mixed-use development to be called the Edge, that is centered around the renovation of two existing buildings designed to contain multiple functions and uses, including restaurants and retail space, as well as the planned construction of a new 5,000-square-foot retail building, along with associated parking landscaping and other site improvements. This comes to us from a planning commission-- From the planning commission with a vote of five to zero to four favorable recommendation. We will set that public hearing for August 14th at 6:00 p.m. All right, next item, 100723, request for consideration of an ABC O20 restaurant retail liquor license for Odie's Edgewood LLC, DBA Odie's Tavern, located at 930 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Melody Salter. Mr. Gualph, I've got the police has approved it, but not fire.
Yes, sir, and I would make a motion for approval pending fire's approval.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Gualph. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Alamon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, having no objection to the license. All right, next item, 110723, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of June 27, 2023 through July 17, 2023, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this you?
I yield to Mrs. Smith.
My lucky day. Started my three-month period. I came up this morning to review the vouchers and had a number of questions, which Mr. Burgett answered for me, and I would make a motion to approve paying the vouchers for the period of June 27th through July 17th.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and will be Resolution 2393. Which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's was not an easy decision, and it hasn't been an easy decision for quite some time. The process of joining the Kahaba Waste Authority and everything else that we've done, visiting these groups and talking with the employees, I know Berkeley has done a-- Well, he's not even here anymore. But Berkeley has done a phenomenal job working with them, and I'm certainly glad to know that these employees have the opportunity, should they choose, to stay with the city of Homewood, especially those that are close to retirement, to stay with us, because we certainly have enjoyed the fact that they have worked their rear ends off for the city of Homewood, and we absolutely appreciate every single one of them. But this was just a time that, you know, we had to make a decision. And you guys made that decision tonight based off the facts that were before you. So I appreciate everybody having to deliberate that, not only in their minds, but in the committee room back there last week, and then, of course, here tonight as well. So thank you guys for that. I do want to say how successful, and I want to thank JJ for working, certainly with everybody in City Hall out on the plaza for the pole vaulting event that was held last week, or I guess two weekends ago, in front of City Hall on the plaza. It was a huge event, lots of people out there, got a lot of comments, not only on social media, but phone calls saying how impressed they were that this event took place. So we're certainly glad, and we hope that can be a reoccurring thing for the city of Homewood. And then lastly, I just want to say a very happy birthday to Mr. Gualph.
Thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
All right. Mr. Gualph, you got any announcements on your 29th birthday?
Yeah. Close. I feel 29, right? It's all up here. I assume Finance at 5:00 p.m. We will put Public Safety immediately following Finance. No, sir, I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Geer?
Just to let you know that the Arts Council plans a closing reception for the current art display on the first floor, Donna Fernberg. So we'll look forward to knowing the date sometime for that. And they did a great job. It's a pretty-- It's a nice installation, so I hope you guys get to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alamon?
I don't really have any comments tonight, except I'd like to set Public Works for my co-counselor after-- Finance and Public Safety. Thank you.
Oh, we made a rule. Don't we have a rule if you're not here?
No rules.
I know, right? You're not on the committee.
Happens all the time. We're supporting our cell counselor.
Following. You know, you could have got me a birthday present.
Appreciate all of you, per usual.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance at 5:00. Thank you for that. And I think the pole vaulting thing is just great. When I was explaining to people, not from Homewood, what we were doing, it was just kind of mind-blowing to think that we-- But we can pull off anything. So I'm so happy that we did that, and a lot of attention was brought to that. I do want to mention, for the special election tomorrow, because I was inquiring about it, I always go to Edgewood Elementary to vote, but you can't go there, so you have to go to the library. So just anyone that is going to vote tomorrow, go to the library or Shades Kahaba, depending on where you usually vote. And then I want to thank JJ for getting me into a meeting with the Birmingham Transit Authority. So he told me like--
Makes you feel any better.
Hey, remember we have a meeting today? So I met with the board and their leadership, and they're telling me it's a new day at BJCTA. They-- Everyone is in harmony, lots of information. I have this report. I'll make a copy for everyone to view, and then I'm going to pass it to you again. To work-- They'll be coming with lots of recommendations for funding, so-- We didn't hit on funding, but we did get a report on ridership. So I told them we're relatively happy right now. So anyway, that's all I have tonight, so just go vote tomorrow.
I appreciate you taking that meeting. I got the call from JJ first, but was unavailable. Ms. Smith?
I will set special issues for after Public Works. I only have one item, so it shouldn't be a big deal. And just to stay on the pole vaulting thing, that was something that Mindy Walden brought to me. Her daughter Brooke is going to be a freshman at Auburn in the fall and is going to be pole vaulting for Auburn. And her club team has done this for years down in Mobile, where they have the Dolphin Vault. And so they have this great idea, because so many of the club kids live in this area, to try to bring it here. And I just want to thank JJ, because when I called him and said, hey, we want to put pole vaulting things in the plaza, and there's going to be kids like jumping all over the place, he was like, okay, we can totally do that. So I want to thank him for making that happen and making that a reality, because it really-- It was super cool, and I'm like, Patrick, I hope it's something that can become an annual thing like it has in Mobile, because I think it did bring some, you know, some really cool opportunities for people to come down to Soho and eat and drink and watch the pole vaulting. And also, just to thank all of our sanitation workers. Berkeley and his whole staff has really, for, you know, years and years and years and years and years, worked so hard to provide this amazing service. And, you know, it's just gotten to a critical mass where we have to make a different choice. But I'm thrilled that whoever-- Whichever employees want to stay with us will have that opportunity, and that hopefully we will, you know, start to really kind of get back on track with our service, and also get our streets employees back working on projects like filling potholes and fixing sidewalks, because we've had to delay a lot of those projects so that they could deliver-- They could pick up trash. So I think it's going to be a good thing. Going to be growing pains, of course, because every time something new like this happens, there'll be growing pains, but I really feel like we can work through that. And we're going to be giving a lot of information out to our citizens. We're going to be putting things in their mailbox. We're going to be posting things on all of our-- You know, all of us who post on our social media, and Brian's going to be putting stuff on the website. So hopefully, we'll be able to hit everybody with all the information they need to have before the service starts on August 1st.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Nelms? All right, Ms. Andrus?
I think there's a Spangle update, isn't there, Ms. Nelms? Okay, yeah, go ahead. I yield back to you.
I'm sorry, I'm asleep.
I was trying to say, you've been-- The Spangle update is the reason for you being tired.
Yeah, I've been on the road for two weeks, and home maybe two days out of those two weeks, so I'm a little sleepy. But just got back from Hattiesburg a couple hours ago, and the Star Spangled Girls of Homewood got first place in the All-Stars Dance Competition.
Very nice.
For like the third year in a row.
It's becoming a habit.
It was amazing. It was great.
Thank you very much. Ms. Andrus?
Okay, well, I guess I'll set PND to be last again. One day, one day. Yes, I'll set PND.
You can move toward one.
I know, exactly. To follow special issues. Happy birthday, Council Gualph. I hope you've had a great day. I know you've had some travel snafus, but I hope you have a great evening. I want to remind everybody to vote tomorrow. I know Council Jones said that as well, so please go out and vote. And I will say, you know, we-- A lot of awful, awful things happened with COVID, but one thing-- One thing that has come out of this is that plaza-- You got to admit, that plaza is engaged, and it really is now our city's front door, which it was just absolutely empty and, you know, not used, and cars coming through. And it's just lively, and every time you go by, people are out-- Right now, in pole vaulting. I mean, I just-- That is really-- If there's anything that we can say that's come out of that COVID, that's one good thing, is the use of our plaza at our city hall to be a central part of our city, and that's been great, so that's all I have.
Mr. Hart?
I am so sorry I missed that the other night on Saturday. I actually was free and just forgot about it. JJ did not call me to tell me to come down for it. But I don't want to miss this chance to thank Council Smith, who, along with some other folks, worked so hard to get the air conditioning system working in here, which, you know, I think somehow we forgot that, that she talked about, talked about, talked about it. Finally, 18 months later, we finally got the parts and put it in, and that was a big deal for this building. So thank you, Council Smith.
Super chill.
Super chill. Yeah. Well, I really don't have anything new to talk about tonight, but want to mention a couple of things that have already been mentioned, but perhaps in a little bit different context. I just want to thank this council and the previous council for one of these things. Making hard decisions is hard. You know, it really is. And everyone up here takes their job seriously, works hard at it, reviews things, and does what they think is in the best interest of Homewood. And I think that's what happened tonight, even though it was a difficult decision, but it was what was right for Homewood. It was also what was right for Homewood to close off that plaza, to build on what Ms. Andrus said. I was out of town for the pole vault. I got all kinds of messages, pictures, phone calls about it, and they weren't just about the pole vault. They were about the plaza, and talking about how great it is that the plaza is used for so many things now, whether it's cornhole or the restaurants or pole vaulting, who would have thought? And it's, you know, the more we go along, the more uses it is getting, and that's great. That's what it's there for. That's what it was designed for originally, rather than being, you know, there for cars and everything, which was also dangerous, happened to be dangerous for kids. And it's just been such a good use of the space, and so, you know, it wasn't necessarily popular with certain people at the time we did it, but it certainly has been worthwhile, and everything I hear about it now is how great a decision that was. So thank you all for all that you do. The city very much appreciates it. And with that, we will be adjourned and see everyone a couple minutes.